All rise.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open. Pursue it to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Let's bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this evening and this time together. We thank you for the opportunity to give our service to Sumner County, to her citizens, and ultimately to glorify you. We pray that you'll be with us tonight as we deliberate. May we make sound judgments and may, again, we do all things that give glory to you. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's check our roll.
Roll calls now open. Each commissioner, please record your presence by pushing the green button. Twenty-three members are in.
Yeah, Mr. Graves is out.
We have twenty-three members present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. All right, just a few changes to the regular agenda before we approve it. If you'll look over, under item 11, reports of standing committees, go down to number three. That should read, Regional Planning Commissioner, four-year terms expiring as follows. Bill Taylor, Hendersonville replacement, Chris Taylor. And then skip down, it should say, recommended replacement where it says Chris Taylor, that should be Gene Rhodes. So basically, switch the names, Gene Rhodes and Chris Taylor there. Also, item, under Consent Agenda, item 1810-10 should move from the Consent Agenda to Budget. We'll place that as number six on the Budget Agenda. All right, is there a motion to approve our Agenda and Consent Agenda? Motion made by Commissioner Foster.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Seconded by Commissioner Gomenden. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Weatherford, do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak tonight?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. All right, let me, as, we have two speakers signed up tonight. Let me remind everyone that when we, when we have public comments, we want to hear from our citizens. Each person has five minutes to speak. Mr. Kemp will keep time and will let you know when you, when you have one minute left. I ask everyone to remember that we follow the rules of decorum of this body, which means that we do not single out or deride any citizen, elected official, or the office and institutions of Sumner County. Also ask that you speak directly to an Agenda item. First up, we have Mr. Nathan Harsh from 2295 Hartsfield Pike in Gallatin, speaking on 1810-01. Mr. Harsh.
I got the notice Friday in the mail that this matter was coming before this body, and it concerns Mr. Harden Guthrie's will. He was the president of National Casket Company and he owned this 359 acres which he entailed, tied it up, so to speak, with a perpetual trust to a kinsman of his, Ted Kelly, Fred A. Kelly, Judge Kelly, who is now deceased, his lifetime, who gets the income from it, and at his death to his son, Doolin Kelly, who has the enjoyment of it now as far as his lifetime, the income from it. And it is now rented and has soybeans and corn rotating years to these companies that do that. The will says that at Doolin's death, it goes to the University of Tennessee for agricultural purposes, for agricultural experimental purposes. And they, the attorneys for UT came down the last time this came up and spoke against it, but they didn't have to speak when they came and showed them the will and so forth. It was withdrawn, the attempt to rezone the property for industrial purposes at that time. The city was involved, so to speak, more at that time than the county. The county has to do, in order to have title of the property, UT now says they're going to give it up. They hope to get some of the money out of it and are not going to fight it. But Sumner County is next in line and it has to be used for agricultural experimental by Sumner County. It cannot be used by Sumner County for an industrial park or residential or what have you. The next in line is Methodist Church in Gallatin that Mr. Guthrie was a member of, and they can sell it and do with it as they please if UT gets it up. Doolin Kelly would get his money and get what it brought, his life estate, if he holds on to that, but you, but based on his age, and I think he's maybe seventy, maybe a little over seventy, I don't know exactly, but the UT and the county cannot get any money. You could buy it then, the city of the county, from the Methodist Church, they, I'm sure don't, would put it up for sale. And it's a very valuable piece of, 359 acres of property, and you know what land is bringing for today and how, and then it could be bought by the city of the county and put it as an industrial park. That's the only way, if you read this will, which is on, which has been probated long ago after his death and is on file, UT put it on record also in the Register of Deeds Office, certified copy of it, the last go around. So that's where we're standing, hoping to any questions concerning it. Anybody have any questions?
We don't really take questions, Mr. Harsh. It's just public comments. So, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Next up, we have Mr. John Beluso from 111 Oakhaven, also speaking on 1810-01. Mr. Beluso.
Evening.
Good evening.
I just got very short comment.
Yes, sir.
When I originally bought out there, it was because of country.
Yeah, if you could, if you could speak into the microphone, yes, sir.
That land out there is some of the best in middle Tennessee. I really don't want it to become industrial, and that's my only comment. Outside of the fact that it was Friday that I found out about this hearing, thanks to a letter in the mail, and I think that's really underhanded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beluso. This closes out our public comments. In terms of announcements from the chair, the Veteran's Service Report is not available right now. He's, he's still recovering from his knee replacement surgery, and so hopefully next month we can get caught up with our Veteran's Service Report. I'm going to yield the floor now to Mr. Holt for a certificate of recognition.
It's my honor tonight to present this certificate of recognition, and I'd like to ask the family to come up if you would. This is a very special person. I actually grew up with Mr. Martin, and we have a resolution tonight recognizing and honoring the memory of Ms. Pamela Denise Martin. Whereas Pamela Denise Martin was a woman who lived life to the fullest in her short 59 years on this earth, and even though she knew that her diagnosis of stage-four metastatic breast cancer would limit her time here on earth, she filled her days with advocacy, fundraising for organizations involved in breast cancer research and outreach, and put a face to the disease for young scientists. And whereas Ms. Martin's words, "Do what you can," were more than just a trite slogan, she truly believed that every day she could have an impact on the world and was hopeful she could be one step ahead of her disease. Whereas Ms. Martin participated in clinical trials with the knowledge that those discoveries would have an impact on future patients and was a constant source of encouragement and inspiration, and the people she touched benefited from her positive attitude and fearlessness, which won her numerous awards in breast cancer advocacy and outreach. Now, therefore, be it, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the 15th day of October 2018 that this body honors and praises Ms. Pamela Martin for the encouragement, strength, and hope she exhibited, and during the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, recognize all the brave women who are fighting this insidious disease, and be it further resolved that this resolution be spread. On the minutes of this body and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Mr. David Martin and family.
Is there a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Second by Commissioner Jerry Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Well, this is my dear friend, Sarah, and Sarah is a mother of Pam. Would you like to say anything?
I can't. I can't. I'd like to, but it's just a cry.
Well, that's all right.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution to honor Dr. Billy Hobbs, and it's going to be delivered to, to Dr. Hobbs. He couldn't make it tonight, so is there a motion to approve our resolution to honor Dr. Hobbs? Motion made by Commissioner Guthrie. Seconded by Commissioner Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, remember, if you look at your Consent Agenda, we moved 1810-10 back to the regular agenda. Is there a motion to approve all the other Consent Agenda items? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Is there a second? Second made by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's see, your written reports by county officials are on your desk. Is there a motion to approve our notaries? Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Becker. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. We'll now go to Committee on Committees. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee on Committees met tonight in its regular scheduled October 15, 2018 meeting. We had four Agenda items that was addressed tonight. Tourism, for the record. Angela Govan, it was a reapportment. Commissioner Lauren Echols will be taking the place of Trish Lamar. That was, and these were group and approved in entirety. Civil Service Board, two-year term. Vicky Fennell, reapportment. Regional Planning Commission, as was mentioned by the chairman on the front end. Chris Taylor to take Bill Taylor's place in Hendersonville. Billy Gomenden to remain, a reapportment for Portland, and Gene Rhodes to take the Gallatin, Steve Graves' position. And the Zoning and Board of Appeals for Sandra Webster was a reapportment by the county executive. Those were all discussed. It was all unanimous, and I so moved.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode. Seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you wanted to say something?
No.
Yes. We, he grouped and approved the, the aspects or the different positions. Did you want to talk or vote, Mr. Taylor? Okay. Okay. All right. How are you voting, Mr. Taylor? Just for the, are you? No? Okay. So, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Commissioner Mo Taylor voted no. Actually, I guess at this point we need to put it on the board and vote. Mr. Kemp? Yes, we're voting on the group and approve all the committees.
All right, we're going to vote on the committee appointments that the chairman, committee on committees just, just outlined. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, the committee appointments are approved.
We'll jump now to education. Mr. Goode.
In Committee on Committees, Industrial Development Board, this is all in your information. Board of Construction Appeals, Civil Service Board, Airport Authority Regional will be moved, are on the agenda for next month, and since I'm standing, no report on education.
Okay. Highway? Mr. Graves is not here, but.
We didn't meet.
Okay. Okay, so no report. General Ops, Ms. Shale.
I have no report, sir.
Okay. Emergency Services? Ms. Kruger?
No, I'm sorry. We met this Monday. No report.
No report. We'll have some more details come up in the budget portion of the meeting, but no other report than that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kruger.
Thank you.
Legislative, Mr. Ring.
Yes, Mr.? Have the microphone on?
Nope.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hit, hit that button again.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the legislation committee, I want to move to the Resolution 1810-01, a resolution to release, relinquish, and remove a trust interest, and it's so moved. And motion made by Commissioner Ring. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goode. Let's go first to Mr. Driver.
Excuse me. Yes, I'll be honest with you, this is the first time that I've seen this, that I did go through my packet and check it. I have not had any calls on this, but I'll be honest with you, I have been out of pocket. I've had family emergencies going on. Mr. Graves is not here tonight. This is in our district, I believe, and the way I'm looking at this, if they just received a notice on Friday, and some may have received it at different times, that's Friday, this is Monday, we had two just from that notice show up tonight to discuss it. I doubt seriously if that's been enough time, and I've had not enough time to hear from my constituents, and I actually make a motion that we refer this back to legislative.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Driver to refer it back to legislative. Second by Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
We can debate.
Okay. Mr. Hinton, are you wanting to, to comment on the, on the motion to refer or on the main bill itself?
Main bill.
Okay.
Take me off.
Okay. Okay. I see no one that wants to discuss. Mr. Goode, were you going to say something?
In the chairman, I'm avoiding public.
You push your mic.
I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Fenton had the opportunity to speak before any action was taken, and also because I think there's a time constraint on this possible ECD program as well, so if, if it would please the body, I'd say we suspend the rules and allow Mr. Fenton to address that issue.
Without objection, we'll let Mr. Fenton speak and see if he can clarify some things, and then we'll come back and make a, make a decision on whether or not to refer, and then the main bill. Mr. Fenton, if you can come up, just come up here, Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular resolution that's here tonight doesn't do anything except allow us to continue to try to attract this company. The opportunity for the community to, to be heard, and there will be three, if this moves forward, there will be three opportunities for them. In a situation like this, there really wasn't a precedent or a call for public notification, so if this should move forward, there will be three opportunities for public input. One will be with comp plan amendment, there'll be advertising and public comment. There'll be advertising and comment for annexation, and there would be advertising and public comment for rezoning, should there, should, again, this move forward. Ms. Echols.
Could you maybe go back and give a summary for the discourages that aren't filling through?
Okay, and I'm, I think I left everybody a message. I didn't get to talk to everybody, and I apologize if we never connected. Mr. Harsh was right, this isn't a trust, and what we're attempting to do here again is, is modify that trust in a way that answers all of what the trust has requested. The University of Tennessee has agreed that if they receive full value of the land, whatever the appraisal says, they get full value, then they are willing to, to consider this, and all the other parties have agreed at this point in time, the church has agreed and has Mr. Kelly, and so this body is the only one left that needs to, to give its permission for this to move forward. And even if it does, folks, this is not a done deal. This is a highly competitive situation for us, and, and one of the things that was mentioned to me in one of the phone calls I got from one of you is, you know, that they don't want the, all that much growth, and if we're not growing, we're dying, and what we're trying to do is use this land very, very well. We have, as was stated, 374 acres, actually, and this company is not going to put up, you know, huge, huge, I mean, building after building and make it into an industrial. This is a light industrial, non-manufacturing technology firm, and even if they did, say, put up a building the size of Gap, and I'm not saying that has not been intimated at all, there would still be 320 acres out there that wouldn't have anything on them. So when we started this conversation, we wanted to make sure that, that whatever happened out there was truly going to take care of the land. The company has, has made a commitment to stay away from any environmentally sensitive areas, and I think it would be incredible opportunity for this community.
Mr. Hinton, did you have a question for Mr. Fenton?
Comment.
Comment?
When he finishes.
Okay. Okay. Does any, do any commissioners have a question for Mr. Fenton? Now, Mr. Becker.
So if I understood, the gentleman who spoke earlier in the public comments, if the church, if it went down to the church, it could be used for other purposes, but with the existing will, was that, I thought that's what I heard.
The will states that they would receive an income from it. That's what, so they would probably do the same thing that, that Mr. Doolin Kelly is doing right now, lease the land out. But they could receive an income from it, yes. But University of Tennessee has already said they want it. They have said, in that letter that I handed out to those of you that were able to come and see me, the University of Tennessee succinctly states that, yes, they would use it, they've had their eye on it for quite some time. However, in this instance, there if, and again, on that sheet, it says down there, if all the other entities agree that this would be a good thing for the community, they would be willing to monetize it if they were to receive the full value for it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And it is kind of secretive, and I.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I had an opportunity to meet with you this past week, and I appreciate that, and I have since had some, some phone calls, and I guess one of my questions, you mentioned, or I think it was said earlier, University of Tennessee, they are, they are being paid to buy their rights to the land out, is that correct?
They said that they would, they would move forward with this if they received full value of the land, which then they will put in an account and use for agricultural research, and they felt that they could address and, and stick to the intent of the will by doing so.
And then, second question, it would then go to Sumner County. We would not receive any money, we would reap benefits from the tax generated from the possible company coming in.
Right. If, the, the county will be the largest beneficiary of all of this, should this move forward, because of the taxes that would come from that.
And then the, the third party was First United Methodist Church?
Yes, sir.
And they, are they being awarded for their rejection of wanting to, in other words, are they getting money to let that property go?
Yes, sir.
They are?
Yes, sir.
And then what's the, what is the deadline of us needing, do we need to do something tonight in order for this to be, to move forward?
Because of the advertising deadlines for the public hearings that I said, we've got a 30-day window for the comprehensive comp plan amendment, and then there's a 30-day window for the annexation and rezoning, and it moves it, it moves it forward, so it would be beneficial and, and allow Gallatin to stay in the hunt if there was a decision that was made this evening.
And then I guess my last question is, and I'm not a lawyer, but is, is this a legal thing for us to do?
Yes. Again, I wouldn't be here if the other folks hadn't already come together and agreed that this would work.
Without violating?
This is the only body that has to have a vote. The others are able to, well, the church, their group actually had a vote, their, their finance committee, but this is an, the only group that, body that needs to have a vote like this, so we made sure that everyone else was, was amenable to this before we came to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster.
Mr. Fenton, nice to meet you.
Yes, sir.
Correctly, did you say that there was no requirement for public notice about this change in this 300 and something acres property?
We aren't changing the property this evening. This, all this is tonight is allowing us to move forward. Again, if there is a change in the property, there will be those three opportunities. There will be notification. All the surrounding folks will get email, and not emails, but letters that'll go to them, whenever, if, if something is actually going to occur. This just lets us move forward to see if we can get it to the next step, but if it goes there, then everyone will get those notifications, and there will be advertising, and there will be those opportunities for public comment. advertising, and there will be those opportunities for public comment.
Do you, do you have any specific dollar figures on the economic benefit of Sumner County giving away their right to 300 and something acres versus using it themselves, or being the beneficiary of that sometime down the road?
Sure. Right now, the county gets $3,705 a year off of it for property taxes. And that's the information that came from Paul Forns in the county assessor's office. Should this move forward, it would immediately come out of, it's in green belt, so it would come out of that, and roll back taxes would be just shy of $25,000 on that. Then it goes on to the tax roll. If this doesn't, and it stays where it is, when, when Mr. Kelly passes away, University of Tennessee has already said they want it, and so it'll come off the tax rolls at that point in time. So what this will do is allow it to stay on the tax roll, and then have a substantial investment in it. And again, long-term, the county will be the largest benefactor, should this move forward.
Okay, one more question, just so I understand. So the University of Tennessee, go balls. This weekend, right, Becker? Okay.
Had a good Saturday.
That's right. A great Saturday. So there's, there's little to no chance that Sumner County government will ever take ownership of this land because UT has expressed...
Yeah, and I, I didn't give that to the rest of you, but I actually gave to Mr. Taylor an email that the president of University of Tennessee sent to me. I went and sat down, had lunch with him to start this conversation, and his first comment was, well, we have farmland all the time that we, you know, sell. And then he shot me an email back that says, oops, they've been looking, eyeing, you know, eyeing this for quite some time.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chris Taylor?
Just to clarify for you all, a couple of things, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here, sir. One, this is, I know we keep saying we're giving away this, our rights to this land, we're giving away land. This isn't ours, because UT is going to get it before we ever do. And they've clearly, stately, I mean, a million times over, said they're going to take it. They're agreeable to this if everyone else is. We're the last part to come up with it. The only thing I'd say, and I just want to remind all of you this, it's land that we're not, we're getting $3,000 from now. If we say we want to assert our right to it, then UT will, and then in a couple of years, when they take it over, we won't get anything for it. The economic model our county is based on, for property taxes and sales tax, is not supported by residences. And the reason I say this is, we've had this discussion before, Mr. Hyde said it perfectly one night. He said, there is not a neighborhood in this county that pays for the services they use from their tax base. He is absolutely right. It's impossible for any one residential area to do that. You have to have commercial. The only reason I bring this up is I'm just saying, again, we're getting $3,000 now. If we assert our right to it, UT will take it, we won't get anything. If we defer our right, and actually it comes to fruition, possibly this could be one of the largest sales tax bases for the county, as far as commercial district, as far as commercial goes.
Property, not sales.
Well, and the reason I say that is, that's what we have to have. We've said it over and over, we can't tax our people to support everything. This is the kind of thing we have to have. And that's...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'd remind everybody that we're taking questions now from Mr. Fenton. If you want to comment on the, if you want to comment on the, on the discussion to defer, or the main bill, if you'll just hold off on that, refer, excuse me, refer. We'll go to Mr. Wright.
I've got a question. Is it going to create any jobs? And if so, how many? What kind of impact is that going to have?
The, the company has guaranteed that there'll be what they call 40 badged employees, making an average of $80-plus thousand a year. There will be subcontractors that come in and work on the technology. But one of the reasons it's, it's been actually attractive, and the city of Gallatin has asked me to move this direction, is we don't have enough workers to fill the jobs out in our industrial park right now. Ms. Comenden can tell you the same thing. We've got, I've got 160 empty positions out there. And this is a different skill set, so it won't detract from the, the jobs that are out there right now. It'll, it'll be, again, a different skill set that will help the community. All right, thank you.
Mr. Becker, I'm gonna try to get everybody in first, and then I'll come back to you. So we're gonna go to Mr. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fenton, just a quick question on, for the homeowners, the adjacent property owners.
Yes.
Is there any type of, I say guarantee for them? I know this is a big tract of land, you said 374 acres.
Yes, sir.
Roughly. And I know, I think you mentioned before, and I'd ask you questions, it's two separate buildings.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of, you know, guarantee is it to keep something huge coming there that's right on their property line, or something that's, it, what would keep this company from going from two buildings to being an entirely large complex? That might be obtrusive or disruptive to neighbors when the original intent that's being presented to us is that it would not be. So what, what kind of, would the city of Gallatin have to say about that?
And first, let me thank you for that letter. It was very accurate, an accurate recap of our conversation, so I appreciate that. Again, they've, they're, they're staying away from the environmentally sensitive areas, which are along the edges, that particularly that south boundary where those houses are down there. You'll see that there's three or four blue line streams, and so they're, they're making sure they stay away from those, which will keep that effectively away from the, the houses that are there. I don't know how, I can't guarantee you, you know, nothing like that is guaranteed. All I know is that, is that their approach has been to keep this environmentally sensitive and, and non-intrusive. And they've been living up to all of their comments at this point in time.
Mr. Tinsley.
Mr. Fenton.
Yes.
Really quickly, because I, I'm pretty sure I know where this property is. And my question is, so it's kind of more along the lines of what Jeremy said. When you, when, when they're saying that they're going to come in here and they're going to build two structures.
Mm-hmm.
Are, is this like a preliminary, we're going to come in, see how this works out, build two structures, and if it takes off, great, we're going to build like this huge facility? Because I know mostly the property around that is farmland. So, I mean, it would...
Right, right.
And then, and coming back, this isn't in Gallatin city limits, is it?
Not yet, no. That's what I referred to earlier, that the annexation would have to take place with public hearings, and the rezoning would have public hearings.
So it would be, it would be up to the county to provide the infrastructure for this facility?
No. I think it has to be annexed before City of Gallatin would, would provide that. And that's one of the things that still has to be worked out. I've been having a conversation with Mr. Graves. I wish he had been here this evening, because right now, it's in the Bethpage-Castilian Springs Water District. And so this company most likely uses more the water than they can supply, and so we have to have that conversation. Like I said, this is just one of those steps along the way.
So this is, this is basically like an early preliminary, where this is like part one of...
It's part six of part 20.
X number.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a lot of it. Again, this is simply to allow us to move forward with it. It doesn't, it doesn't start anything in particular.
Mr. Becker.
Okay. So tonight, the request is just to release, waive, relinquish, remove the trust interest. But, so would it come back to re, to us to rezone it from agricultural to industrial?
No, sir. That goes to the city.
That would go to the city of Gallatin?
It would be annexed first, and then rezoned, correct. And if it doesn't move forward, everything stays the same.
Okay. So, so the city of Gallatin, would, would annex, and then, like you mentioned, they would post all those postings, et cetera? And so there would be ample amount of time for, for citizens to get involved in these, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, I see no more. Mr. Ring, did you want to, yes, go ahead, Mr. Ring, sorry.
A couple of questions. One is to clarify, you said earlier that there was no legal reason for us to send out notices. So we did not send out notices.
For this particular instance, just to look until...
Correct. Because notices were mentioned, and just to make sure we understand, Sumner County did not send out notices.
Correct.
Okay. The other clarification is, if this, if we pass this tonight, and it were, and the deal were not to go to fruition, is this still in effect, or is this canceled?
I asked your attorney, and it would be rescinded, and you simply wouldn't sign the paperwork to request this.
Okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify, make sure.
The most, the resolution would be rescinded.
Specifically, if this, if skillet doesn't come into fruition, we will not sign our, our paperwork.
Gotcha, thank you.
But...
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. I don't see any other questions in the queue. I'm gonna go now. Mr. Hinton has a comment.
This, we need industry to pay the bills. There's no question about that. The greatest thing that happens to us down here is when somebody goes in and buys some property from somebody, and goes from ag to industrial, and pays us lots of money. We like that. Because you're right, nobody's going to move in here and build houses, they're going to foot the bills for Sumner County. But I, I think I'm the first one that's going to mention that there was a man who bought property and paid for it, and determined that he wanted to leave that property in a trust. And I think that took place like 50 years ago. And here we sit in all our wisdom and authority, and we decide what that man desired for his property has no meaning. We're, we're prepared to decide that he didn't have the right to put this property up and have it used for the intent and purposes. Although he paid for it, he bought and paid for it, and paid taxes on it, I guess, all his life. And he'd said, here's what I want to do with my property, and we're about to take a vote to say that that man didn't have the authority, or didn't have any rights when he was with us on this planet. I can't hardly do that. I'd like to think that if I set up a trust, of course, he won't be nothing but two war I pick up trucks.
Are you leaving those to University of Tennessee, Mr. Hinton?
Yeah, that's right. I'm gonna give them to UT mechanic office. But, but, but anyway, I have, I have really, really problems with, I have conscious problems with circumventing something that a deceased person, and I don't know what he went through to attain this. I mean, I don't know how many hardships he went through to be able to accumulate this property. And his intentions was pretty sound, because he started out with UT, and ultimately wound up at the church. So he wasn't, there was no bad ploys. There was nothing in there that Jack Daniels could build a factory. I mean, he, he went through the routine like a normal person was, and he wanted it to wind up the way he stipulated for it to wind up. And what we're about to do is make a decision that his preference for property he had bought and paid for has no bearing whatsoever on what's ultimately going to happen. That's, that's what we're asked to do tonight. And, I mean, I, I wish, I wish this wasn't in the way. I wish this, these people that wanted to come in here and develop, that there was land out there, that somebody had a price tag on, they'd pay them the price tag, and we'd be off and running. But that's not the case. We're, we're going to override, we're going to override a man's preference before he left this life to, to stipulate what his property was going to be done with. And I got a, I got a really, really bad problem with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hinton. Mr. Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've got all the respect in the world for Commissioner just spoke, but that's not entirely accurate. Actually, it's going through the process that he did stipulate. And the family member that is, that is, that is in that stipulation, it, it wants to do this, and it's going through the process that was stipulated. And we're in that. I'll echo again what Mr. Chris Taylor said earlier. The one thing that was being left out is, even if we took it, which we know we couldn't, because the University of Tennessee, it stipulates in there, and we have to do agriculture with it. I'm gonna go on a limb and say we won't even get in farming business either. But, and the, I think Chairman Ring mentioned the process and, and the public notices and so forth. This is going exactly the way it should go at this stage. And as mentioned by Mr. Fenton, all the public notices that would affect this area would come forth. Someone said, mentioned about the, the little bit of the privacy and so forth. That's the way these deals are done. Some of you guys will remember, you didn't remember, because you didn't know about it. But when we got Beretta, it was only known as Clover, as a project name. Bridgestone, where Mr. Becker worked, was called Emma. No one knew about it, where it was going. Volkswagen, Nissan, you name it. That's the way these processes work. And these companies upfront do these disclosures to say, if this leaks out and gets to our type employees, and other people they may be negotiating with, they pull out. Sumner County has nothing, nothing but to gain majorly here from what will probably be the largest taxpayer in Sumner County when it's all said and done. And let me end with this, Mr. Chairman. This body has kind of shown a, overall, not 100%, but as, as those that have been here for a while, have always shown, for those that are kind of in an area that wants something, we've always kind of gone along with that. So the, the people that are in the stipulation, 100% right now, are fine with the way it's going. The University of Tennessee, the church, and the city of Gallatin. Mayor Brown, that was on, on this body for 10, eight, 10 years with many of us, wants, wants, wants this to go through. I talked to city councilman at large today in Gallatin. Any, everybody involved wants this to happen. We, again, I'll, I'll end with what Mr. Taylor said. Nothing will happen. Right now, we're allowing the process to go, the dominoes to fall, to even just get the ball rolling. And this is, and it's going exactly the way it would work with state ECD, TVA, or any involved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goode. I see no more comments, so we will go now. The, the motion on the floor is to refer this to legislative. A vote yes means to refer it, a vote no means to proceed back to the main motion.
Motion to refer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving a affirmative vote, motion to refer fails to carry.
Okay, back to the main motion. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Yeah, I would like to speak to some of the comments that's been made, and also speak to the citizens that's here tonight. I understand that these, these things have to be kept confidential. And I understand, for the, the businesses looking to locate here, anywhere in our county or anywhere in our state. But the last time I checked, the property owner should have a, have a right before anybody else looking to come here. And what I mean by that, there's a way to notify people without disclosing all those details. And that's something that I think this body, and every body in the state of Tennessee, needs to do more of. That's notifying people. It wouldn't cost us 150 bucks to mail letters, to put bigger newspaper advertisements in the papers, or to advertise on a free forum, which is Factbook, as some people here like to call it, but it's Facebook. I mean, there's free ways to let people know something potentially is coming in your backyard. You know, you don't have, we make the rules right here. We're the legislative body of Sumner County. So we can say how property that's looking to be rezoned or revamped in Sumner County has to be noticed. We can do that. Campaign signs, like we got changed here through this body, from a little bitty sign to a bigger sign that notifies people that's placed on a property that's looking to be rezoned, are not that expensive. I'll make a contribution to myself. Because the people that own this property, that's worked this property all their life, that's bought a house out next to a big farm. Well, there's a reason they buy in those areas. There's a reason they live in those areas. And I think that they have every right to be known, be one of the first to know, that potentially something is coming into your backyard. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Ring?
Yes, sir.
A couple, there are a couple of issues. Number one, again, has been said by other people, if we vote no on this tonight, project probably dies. And at the end of the term of the, of the trust, it goes to University of Tennessee. Now, if the University of Tennessee maintains it as an agricultural research station of some sort, we will not get any revenue, as has been stated. However, they could turn around and sell it if they want to, to put in any kind of a, a, a factory, or a warehouse, or anything like that. We, they would own the property. They could do what they wanted to at that point, and then put the money into agr, into agricultural research. That is what's happening now. They, the money they're going to receive from this property is going to go into agricultural research, which is basically what the, Mr. Guthrie wanted. He wanted the property used for agricultural research. So by selling it, the money will be put towards agricultural research. So it does fulfill his, his wishes. As I stated earlier, we did not have a responsibility, legal, moral, or ethical, as far as... As I stated earlier, we did not have a responsibility, legal, moral, or ethical, as far as I'm concerned, to notify anybody, because we're not doing anything to change the property. Nothing we do here tonight will change that property. It, the property, if we pass this, the property will move on to the city, which will go through the process of changing it. So, we're not doing anything to change the property. So, there was no reason for us to send out any notices. And as he said, this is, what, step six of 20? It's going to be going on for quite a while, over the next few months, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak to it towards the city. And if this goes through, I have the belief that this will be one of the biggest, one of the best proposals, projects that have come through this county, maybe forever. So, I encourage everyone to vote for this. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ring, excuse me, Commissioner Ring. Commissioner Driver?
Yes, I just want to address this to Ms. Dennen. Is what he just said correct, that if it passes to UT, they can sell it and do whatever they want to with it?
That's my understanding, that is. It will become theirs in face and.
Yeah, I just want to, I guess, re-clarify something that was stated earlier, that at some point, if it was, at some point if it was moved forward, that to rezone it from agriculture to industrial, the city of Gallatin at that point would be posting it and having the meetings and notices, everything that Commissioner Taylor mentioned earlier, which I completely agree with him. And so, with them having to do that, I'm, I don't have any personal issues with it right now, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Hinton?
Am I to understand that if the University of Tennessee gets this, then they can build a factory out there if they want to?
I'm going to go to Ms. Dennen on that.
Let me, let me clarify that. It would go to the University of Tennessee, and then they would have the ability to make changes to the trust, either through the court system and/or just going and seeking a zoning change through the city of Gallatin. It might still be in the county's name at that point, because they might not, they might not have gone on to the city and sought the annexation. We don't know. There's a lot of what ifs with that. But what we do know is that the University of Tennessee has said, if this project does not go forward pursuant to these terms, they will accept the gift.
The gift to the University of Tennessee stipulated that it was supposed to be for agricultural purposes. Does, if they sell this property and reinvest it in the ag department in Locksville, will that satisfy the stipulation?
And I don't have an answer for that. That'd be up to a court to decide.
It sounds like, Mr. Hinton, that attorneys would decide that, I think.
Don't blame her. All right.
Okay. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so let's vote. Let me just clarify that we are now voting on the main amendment. A vote yes is, I mean, I'm scared, the main motion, excuse me, the main motion. So, a vote, a vote in the affirmative is to relinquish our claim on the trust. A vote negative is to keep our claim on the trust.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 21 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote? With 15 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right, Mr. Ring, did you have anything else for legislative?
Nothing else, sir.
Okay. Financial management, Mr. Becker.
No, sir.
All right, let's go to budget. Mr. Taylor?
How about that one? I'll get it about next year. First part is Resolution 1810-02. It's approving an economic impact plan for the tractor supply development area Portland, Tennessee project. Just to give you the 30-second Reader's Digest version, we have Ms. Kamendin, who will do a much better job than me, but just so the commissioners, the previous TIFs we did for Hendersonville were much more encompassing, much larger, and it was before the law was refined. The gentleman that initially wrote the law, and then has wrote some of the changes to it, cleaning it up, came and spoke to us about it on one occasion for sure, and in another. And he was very specific in that this is completely different than what they did in Hendersonville. It's for one plot of land that will be used for bringing in the tractor supply company. The initial money that we get from taxes, part of it will still come back to the county and to Portland. The other portion of it will go to pay the TIF. And their expectation is around a million to 2 million in sales a year. So, they're pretty excited about it. It's going to be a cornerstone for them as far as commercial development goes. And I'll say for Ms. Kamendin, if you've ever been around her, she is anything but, I mean, just super thorough. So, for her to agree to this, to work through this, there's no doubt in my mind that they were tortured beyond belief to make sure everything was done right. But I'll move on now, sir.
Okay.
Or so moved, sorry.
Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, second by Commissioner Schell. I see no one on the, in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wish to vote, anyone wish to change your vote? With 21 affirmative votes, the resolution is approved.
All right. Commissioner Taylor?
Resolution 1810-03, this is appropriating $40,601 in the county general fund for the drug court and for assistant salary, and it's just where they're reallocating and passing through.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Taylor, or, excuse me, Commissioner Foster. So, I see no one in the queue. Let's vote.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. 22 votes are entered. Anyone not voting, anyone wish to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, resolution is approved.
All right. The next three resolutions, I'm going to make a motion to group and approve. It's going to be Resolutions 1810, 04, 05, and 06. And these are adopting best practices for multi-year Sumner County capital planning, strategic plan, and long-term financial planning. We've discussed this for a number of years, that we need to have set in place an idea for how this county can move forward. What Mr. Long has done is he's gone with the state to see what the best practices are as far as that goes for counties to do. We've brought that up. We are currently asking all of our department heads right now to do a five-year capital spending plan, and that would be for just operational expenses, I'm sorry, for five-year operational, and then a 20-year capital. They're already starting that. This defines how we're going to do that. It also meets the requirements we have for some audits that the state has, and where they've asked us before, we've been somewhat compliant, but this kind of cleans it up, and it really just, it says the best way to do this. But it's something we've said for a long time we need to do.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor, second by Commissioner Goode, just ahead of Mr. Becker. Let's vote.
I had to change all of them.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did not know we were changing them.
I apologize, Mr. Kemp.
All right, we are, we are voting on Resolutions 04, 05, and 06. Each commissioner, please record your vote.
I won't do that again. At least not until next month.
20, all 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change their vote? It is unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
Could you check, Mr. Kemp, please? I want to make sure on 1810-02, I actually did vote, yes. I'm sorry, I'm having a brain freeze, I don't remember if I did, so I want to show affirmative if I did.
We will make sure you show voting, yes, 02.
All right. And this was the one we moved from the consent agenda, and I want to thank Commissioner DeWitt, who caught this and realized it, so that way we could bring it from the consent agenda into the budget. And it's going to be 18 dash, or 1810-06. And it is appropriating $650,000 from local capital projects to fund the tower communications equipment for EMA. This is the last of the infrastructure we have to set up for our radio system that we've been talking about for years. And I think we all understand that the dire need for it, for our public safety. This will let us build two more towers, replace the buildings we currently have that house, the equipment there. We initially did it with temporary facilities, and Ken has done a great job finding us some good deals on it. This is money that is planned for, it's already in place, and we're good to go as far as that goes.
Okay. So, motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor.